Monday, April 7th, and this is your Moscow City Council meeting. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. John, would you like to lead us tonight, please?
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Now I will have a proclamation to read for a fair housing proclamation. Whereas April 2014 marks the 46th anniversary of the passage of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act, and whereas Idaho Human Rights Commission Act has prohibited discrimination in housing since 1969, and whereas equal opportunity for all regardless of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familiar status, or national origin is a fundamental goal of our nation, state, and city, and whereas equal access to housing is an important component of that goal as fundamental as rights to equal education and employment, and whereas housing is a critical component of family and community health and stability, and whereas housing choice influences people's exposure to crime and drugs and our access to education, employment, social and cultural resources, and health care, and whereas we have enacted laws to ensure equality of choice for all transactions involving housing, and whereas the mission of the city's Fair and Affordable Housing Commission includes researching, analyzing, and recommending to the mayor and council ways in which the city may further fair housing practices, and whereas among the duties of the Fair and Affordable Housing Commissions are to review the city code analysis and impetus to fair housing and action plans each year and to recommend changes as it may deemed necessary, and whereas ongoing education, monitoring, and public outreach are keys to raising awareness of fair housing principles, practices, rights, and responsibilities, and whereas barriers to fair housing will only be eradicated through broad-based and consistent cooperation, commitment, and support. Now therefore, I Bill Lambert, Mayor of the city of Moscow, do hereby proclaim April 2014 to be Fair Housing Month, and the city of Moscow, and I urge all citizens, to support programs and policies that prevent or eliminate discriminatory housing practices. Is there anybody here from Fair and Affordable Housing tonight? There is not, so we'll carry on. Bill, would you, you're the city liaison for this proclamation, would you like to accept this?
Bill likes his picture taken. Team Bill over there.
Bill and I did not wear blue shirts on purpose tonight for this.
Don't want to get too much light, start shining off there, seem to be bald heads.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
John.
I move we accept the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Okay, John made the motion to move with Tom Lamar's second. I will start with the role from Art.
Aye.
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 Okay, and the Consent Agenda is approved. Okay, number two is Staff Recognition. Gary Redner, sir, you have the podium.
Thank you, Your Honor. We, it's been some time since we did a staff recognition report. Had a lot of things going on since then. First, I'd like to recognize Officer Kyle Pasula and Officer Craig Preston who were awarded their post-intermediate certificates. One of the requirements is two years of law enforcement experience with the department, possession of a basic certificate, and a bachelor's degree from an accredited college or university, and that the officers demonstrated a commitment to excel as well as progress in his or her personnel development in both training and expertise. We also have advanced post certificates awarded to Officer Jay Waters and Officer Sean Cothran. The advanced certificate requires a possession of an intermediate certificate, a college degree from an accredited college or university, and a minimum of four years in law enforcement. And those advanced certificates, an officer has demonstrated commitment to mission objectives and respective advancement. We also have a recognition of Jeff Spellman, one of our volunteer firefighters. He was elected firefighter of the year 2013 from the Holly Jamison Post 2905, Moscow, Idaho, of the Veterans of Foreign Wars. So congratulations to Jeff. Jeff, of course, is our payroll person down in the finance department. And we also have recognition of Officer Phil Gray, who was awarded the, at the Moscow Police Department Lee Newbill Brotherhood Award from the Fraternal Order of Police 2013 on December 20th of 2013, and Officer Justin Dean, who was awarded the Moscow Police Department Officer of the Year Award from the Fraternal Order of Police at the same awards banquet. So congratulations to all these folks. And we'll have some other awards coming up in May as our champs competition, if you will, recognizing different awards for city employees in recognition of Public Service Recognition Week. So we'll have some more for you in May.
Gary, is any of the staff here that you just named off?
No, sir. Not that I can see. Do you want to be recognized?
Kathleen, this is not part of your thing. Thank you, anyway.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on the agenda is Mayor's appointments, and it is my privilege to announce the appointment of Mackenzie Carlson.
Carsgallin.
Carsgallin. Sorry. Carsgallin. I was just seeing if you would catch me this early in the evening.
Oh, you missed out.
Anyway, of course, Mackenzie is Dan Carsgallin's daughter, 15-year-old, and she's a high school, she's going to have a high school seat, a non-voting seat on the Moscow Arts Commission as soon as it will be approved by this council.
I would move to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, Art made the-
I'm not going to recuse myself because I'm trying to consolidate power.
Art made the motion with Wayne's second, and we will start with John.
Much as I hate to, aye.
Aye.
An emphatic aye.
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 Okay, Mackenzie, welcome aboard. We appreciate you stepping up to the plate. She's not here this evening.
I tried to drag her in, but she didn't.
Yeah, and so-
None of it.
But anyway, that's pretty neat. We've got a 15-year-old high school kid that is willing to serve on one of our commissions as a high school, non-voting, and that's really neat. The more we can get young people in our community involved in these type of endeavors, the stronger our community will be. So I'm pretty excited about having that happen. Okay, next on the agenda will be public comment, and we always save some time for public comment. If anybody has any comments they'd like to come up, just please limit your remarks to three minutes and state your name and address for the record, please. Seeing no one rush to the podium, I guess we will go ahead and move on to item five, which is, item five is Sexual Assault Awareness Month proclamation, which I will be reading. But Mary, if you would please come forward from Alternatives to Violence and introduce yourself and your address. Mary, tell us who you are.
Yes. I'm Mary Walsh. I am a victim advocate for Alternatives to Violence, the police. I work in the Moscow office. You said to give my address.
Please.
We don't typically do that. It's 1103 D Street. So, sorry, just teasing. So I just want to thank you, Mayor Lambert, for honoring this issue in our community and reading the proclamation. It is, when we get this type of public support and recognition, it makes it easier for victims who haven't yet received services to step forward and be welcome to talk about the issues and to come and receive our services from the community. Moscow is very special in so many ways, but it's not unique when it comes to the issues surrounding sexual assault. We have community members of all ages, genders, socioeconomic status, and backgrounds who have been victimized. We still have many of our community members, our family, our friends, our neighbors, our coworkers, who have not yet received support or the justice that they needed from their sexual violence. So when we do this, you are a part of the hope that victims in our community can feel. And last year when we were here in fall for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we were able to tell you folks a little bit about what we're doing as an agency in the community. So I just want to go through some quick stats. Just this last year, we worked with over 150 victims and survivors who needed help around the issues of domestic violence, sexual assault, and stalking. And that happens in our community. We responded to over 1,500 hotline calls at all hours of the day and night. We provided 1,300 individual advocacy counseling hours. We provided 103 educational and outreach activities. And we were able to shelter 26 adults and 26 children for a total of 534 nights of safe shelter, and those were people who were seeking immediate safety from a violent situation. We continue to cultivate partnerships as we build an environment in Moscow where domestic violence and sexual assault are no longer a constant reality in our community. We network with other providers to make sure that we're not duplicating services. Our partnership with Moscow Police Department School Resource Officer Phil Gray has led to the Safe Dates Teen Dating Violence Prevention Curriculum to reach all of the health classes in Moscow High School, and that's a huge accomplishment. We're really, like you said, Mayor, we're getting to the youth, and that's effective. Our city and county prosecutors, law enforcement, and officials from the University of Idaho are continuing to meet quarterly so that we can ensure monitoring and updating our city and county response protocols so that these crimes can ensure consistent response to our victims and survivors. Ongoing community support is vital to what we do. We cannot do it without your acknowledgement of who we are and the need in our community and your support, as well as support from the community. It shows up in so many ways. The financial support that we get from the city, numerous volunteers to benefit in community events like the Moscow Raid. Some of the stylists at Essence Salon are putting on, they're donating their service hours and their talent to do a sexual assault awareness promotion this Saturday, and that's just huge. So again, I would like to thank you, Mayor Lambert, and the city council for taking the time to recognize Sexual Assault Awareness Month and for taking the issue seriously. We greatly appreciate it on behalf of our agency and the victims that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Just stay right up there, Mary, because I'm going to read this proclamation. But before I do that, you know, Alternatives to Violence, as well as the line, have been in our community for years and years and years, and have done a wonderful, wonderful job. When I served, I had the pleasure of serving on United Way for a number of years. They were two of the agencies that got funds from us, and, you know, it's a sad thing, but every community does have those things in it, and we're not sheltered from that. So you folks do a wonderful job. And with that, I take great pleasure in reading this, even though there's a slight tone of sadness as well as I read this proclamation, Mary. Sexual Assault Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month draws attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every community member of Moscow, and whereas rape, sexual assault, sexual harassment impact our community statistics indicate that one in five women and one in 71 men will be raped at some point in their lives, and whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of 18. Whereas we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions, and whereas with leadership, dedication, we can be successful in preventing sexual violence in Moscow through increasing education, awareness, and community involvement, and whereas Alternatives to Violence strongly supports the efforts of national, state, local partners, and of every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts to prevent sexual violence. It is time for all of us to take appropriate action and to support one another to create a safer environment for all. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Bill Lambert, joint advocates in communities across the country, employing an active role to prevent sexual violence. Along with the United States governments and the state of Idaho, I do hereby proclaim April 2014 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Moscow.
Thank you so much.
Over here.
Oh, there's the sun.
There's one quick thing I want to mention about Mary. She, I had my mother, my late wife and I, her mother lived with us for a decade, and Mary was one of our caregivers that was so kind and generous in her time and devotion in helping us. So I do have a soft spot in my heart for you, Mary, in what you do and the work that you guys do. Thank you very much. Okay, I will move on now to item number six, which is Ed Button from our Moscow Volunteer Fire Department is going to give us our report. Hello, Ed. How are you tonight?
Mayor, council members, state my name. Ed Button, I'm fire chief for Moscow Volunteer Fire Department, Moscow Rural Fire District, and I always look forward to this evening. If I can get my- Hello. Do that then. Get this thing up. Like I said, my name's Ed Button. I'm fire chief from Moscow Volunteer Fire Department, and this is basically our yearly report, commission report to the city council. Also integrated into this is our false alarm report that we've been doing in conjunction with this. And I'm just real proud to be here to represent all these wonderful people that give so much to the community. Timing was off a little bit ago, but just a few minutes ago, we heard a siren go by. It was either an ambulance or a fire truck, and it was a great segue into this report. And I'll get started. This is an organization that I feel has a service to the community like no other. It's a volunteering success story. A lot of departments across the country are having a tough time getting people to volunteer for fire and EMS service to their communities. Frequently you go through communities and you'll see a sign on the edge of town that's welcome to my community, and the next sign is please come and volunteer, be a firefighter or an EMT. And in Moscow, we have waiting lines to get in. In fact, I took an application today from a young man who wants to be a part of our ambulance corporation. If you look at the membership numbers, we do, we frequently take tally of who's who in our department, and as of the 27th, we have 104 people in the organization. Some people wear multiple hats. And if you look at the numbers from the ambulance side of the house, last year, we did 1582 calls. That's quite a few. Also last year, 960 fire department responses, and that includes the city and the rural. And down a little bit from the, in 2012, but we'll be talking about some of the possible reasons for that, too. And what does that mean? Look at, it's been a few years ago since we had some large-scale fires, is what I call them, but we had two big fires from years ago. We had 42 people on scene, and there's very few fire departments that can match those numbers without calling mutual aid. And so it's amazing what takes place here. One thing, it's a cliche, feather in your cap, whatever you want to call it, but we have just finished an audit this last summer that classified everything within the department as well as some public works qualities like water supply and things like that. And last time it was done, it was in six years ago, and we had won a Defense Classification Three, and we successfully defended that. And there isn't a community in the state that has a better than a three classification. So it's pretty amazing what we're doing here. We'll go through this real quick. Not a lot of people know that the Volunteer Fire Department's a nonprofit corporation. In addition to be fire chief, I am also the member of the Board of Directors as a president. And how the city's integrated into the volunteer program or vice versa, the volunteers own Station One downtown. A lot of people don't realize that. We jointly own Station Two in the city up on North Main, edge of town. The city owns that with cooperation with the Rural Fire District as well. So it's amazing the integration here and the cooperation. I'd like to speak to the spirit of volunteerism here. You just see the example of the ambulance. The volunteers own the ambulance service in the community. Now, from a fireside, the volunteers contract with the city to provide manpower. The city owns the trucks and the equipment, and it's pretty unique. It's not totally unique in the country. There's other examples of this, but you don't see very many places that have this type of cooperation and type of arrangement. And it's kind of fun to see what the volunteers did with the local community pride in the last ambulance that we purchased. Here's a key program that helps, in my opinion, keep the program volunteer in the city, is our Student Resident Firefighter Program. The thing's over 60 years old. Run from 22 to 24 students in our three stations, and we provide them with training and opportunity to grow and do things that they wouldn't get anywhere else. And it's been an amazing program that helps with our Defense Classification Three, and it really helps with our response times. As we see the next slide, the NFPA Association is a program where they create standards over a wide variety of areas. But in suburban communities served by, like a volunteer department, the standard is response time, they want 10, 10 minutes, 10 firefighters within 10 minutes on scene. And what do we do? In 2013, we responded within 5 minutes and 33 seconds on a fire and rescue responses. And typically, we put 20 to 30 people on scene, and that was with a generally working structure fire. So we're meeting and exceeding the standards nationally. So we're doing a very good job here, if I don't say so myself. What does it take to volunteer? Takes some training. This is a complicated world we live in, and we continually get added tasks and responsibilities. To become an EMT, estimated 110 training hours. Actually, I believe it's more than that. You'll end up spending more time than that, but on paper, that's what it is. To become a firefighter one, our basic recruit class, that's what we do, is approximately 142, 143 hours. And then there's continuing ed. We have to stay sharp. There's always new things to learn, and we don't always have the big fire, and that's a good thing. So we have to train to be ready and to keep everybody sharp. And exercises, that's another way. There's a, learn to cooperate with our mutual aid partners and also pull out all the equipment and use it in a simulated exercise. And we've done quite a few of these, and just for brevity, put up a few, but includes active shooter exercises, and a big one's our sober graduation that we've been doing for a few years. One thing to note was that zombie mass casualty exercise got national exposure, and it was kind of silly in a way, but some people across the country took particular offense to that, but it's a common theme across the country. We wanted a mass casualty exercise, but without a gruesome type of, like a mass shooting or a plane wreck scenario. So we had to have a reason of why everyone was hurt, but so we used that theme, and it worked. Again, the volunteers own Station Number One, and this is just an example of some of the things that we've done with the critical infrastructure that is part of Moscow. And as landlords, the volunteers have to maintain the building, and you can see some of these items that we've done over the years. I've included them in my presentation just to show you responsibilities that, and the examples of responsible ownership of this critical infrastructure. And it continues on. It's, these could be classified as historic buildings, but we've chosen not to go that direction because there's some things that kind of tie your hands. But we have been real responsible with this property, and I think this is a good example of it. And one thing that's a project in process, we're working with the city, we're putting in an emergency generator in the time of power outages or disaster, whatever, we'll be able to still operate this building and respond to the community needs. And we've got a couple examples of some future projects. As always, the popular false alarm report. This is a program that has turned out to be doing what I hoped it would. It's, we've had some extreme levels of false alarms over the years, and it was time to put in a false alarm ordinance or resolution. And it's, we're very serious about this, but we're, use a lot of discretion, and we examine each one, each case on an individual basis. The fire marshal and I look at all these, and we review them before any citations are given. And here's some examples of what some of the false alarms come from. Now, I should say, this has helped a lot with some building maintenance and system maintenance by some of the components and businesses and residences on campus. And so it's been a good program. As it says at the bottom, it's not to generate revenue, it's to get some compliance and some safe and sane practices here, whatever it say. We did this, we started it in 2010, and it went the wrong way, didn't it? Here we go. It's, our intent was to educate people, and there's a lot of serious impacts and the hazards. We don't want fire trucks, police cars, and ambulances going through town with the lights and sirens all the time. There's also, some of the biggest fires I've ever been on started out as a little bit of smoke coming out of like electrical outlet. And if you continue to have apathy from people by not taking some of these false alarms serious, eventually you could have some serious ramifications, and we don't want that. So there was a real need there, too. Here's the fee schedule that we've, as the council approved, and this is what we use to this day. The first two were free. And as you move up, it's, there's a small fee. If you looked at some of the, my colleagues around the country, if they saw what we were charging for false alarms, they would probably get a little bit of a chuckle because it's not that much. There's a lot of places that charge a lot more. But this has been enough, and at this point in time, I don't ever, I don't advise increasing it because it seems to be working. Here's some numbers. This is what it was in 2009, and now look at it at 2013. And we're seeing some positive results that just the numbers are clearly indicating. There's a chart, and it's, I've noticed it because I'm not getting chased out of my shower first thing in the morning as much as I used to in the old days. So we've got some good trends going here. We'll always have some false alarms, but a lot of them are by these various detectors. Now I've got 13% by malicious and intentional false alarms. Sometimes you'll have a baby in mom's arms reach over and pull the fire alarm, and that was falls into the 13%. But anyway, those are the numbers that we've seen this last year, and there's a real quick, like charts, same numbers. Now how many citations have we issued? In 2011, we did 25, the first full year of our ordinance. We're, as you can see, in the second and third year, kind of steady, but that's, you know, like half of what we used to, and so we're showing some positive results from this program. Moving on, service to the community like no other. The ambulance company and the fire companies are so involved in the community, and it's amazing. There's, and these are just a few of the outreach programs that we have. Lee Newbill, the LDS Preparedness Fair that just finished up, and the pancake feed has turned out to be really popular every year. And so we're also available for senior citizens. They want us to come in and visit their home and offer some advice. They want us to come in and visit their home and offer some advice. We're very willing to do that and happy to do it. And our second grade program is like historic. There's kids that are adults now with kids, went through that and talk about it. And they're pretty pleased that we're still doing it. And here's some example of a few other programs that we're doing. One thing that is really cool, there's a couple of estates that were donated to the Volunteers. And this is an example of some of the monies that was directed towards the Volunteers. We bought a fire safety house, smokehouse, if you want. The other one we had had served many years, and it just became obsolete and through age was not usable anymore. But this commercially made one, and there's lots of different features and uses that we can provide. And we're also sharing it with the surrounding communities. Genesee is going to be using it here in the next few weeks. And so this was another really outstanding service that the Volunteers are providing for the community. And here we go, some outstanding members of the community, part of a training exercise. And if you have any questions, I'm willing to...
Ed, thank you for your wonderful presentation. That false alarm ordinance is really working well. There's a bar graph for the last five years sure showed up and showed how it's working. I mean, it's almost 100 less calls from the first year you implemented. So that's terrific.
Yeah, you can't ask for better than that.
In your department, I mean, for decades and decades, we've enjoyed volunteers that have worked endlessly, tirelessly for our fire department. And these are normal men and women that have full-time jobs and have other functions, and they do this for the love of their community. I believe that deeply. And so, Council, you got something you'd like to share with Ed here while he's here?
Only the congratulations for doing a great job and running a great, great department. We appreciate it very much.
Well, yeah, there's a lot of great leadership, a lot of great participation. And I'm just lucky to have had the opportunity to be Fire Chief for this community. And I got to share the wealth because it's amazing the talent in that organization. That's what I have to say.
Wayne, Chief, the two years I was council liaison for the Fire Department gave me the opportunity to learn more about the operation of it. But more than that, to see the professionalism and especially camaraderie that you have within that organization. There's a huge amount of pride within that and self-discipline. And while every organization will have its problem, you've done an excellent job in being able to police those problems internally also. And so congratulations on all of that. Thank you.
Thank you, I'll share that with everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. You bet. You're welcome.
Okay, folks, item number seven, sanitation roll cart report. Tim Davis, would you please step to the podium? And do we have any runaway carts anywhere that have not been located?
There's been a few on a windy day, but most of them have turned up. Mayor, Council, I'm Tim Davis, City of Moscow, Sanitation Operations Manager. I was asked to give a solid waste roll cart report. And I'm going to start out, there was a series of written questions regarding the solid waste roll cart collection program that were recently put forth to Mayor Lambert by an interested Moscow resident. I was asked to address these questions at City Council, and this report was also delivered to the Public Works and Finance Committee on March 24th. The questions were entitled "Solid Waste Ordinance." The city's new solid waste ordinance went into effect August 1st, 2013. Because it has been in effect for six months, now I am interested in knowing how effective it is. Therefore, I would like to know, as of February 1st, 2014, question number one, how many residences are using the 35-gallon cart? We have 2,966 on the weekly service and 385 on the on-demand service. Those are all 35-gallon carts. Question two, how many residences are using the 65-gallon cart? We had 1,734. Question three, how many residences are using the 95-gallon cart? We also had 385 using the larger 95-gallon cart. On average, how many on-demand carts are set out per week or month, if that is a better statistic? We've been averaging approximately 230 per month. How many residences have changed size of their container that they are using? We had 781 equipment swaps those first seven months. The final question was, one of the advantages which was cited for going to the roll cart system was that it would eliminate the amount of water that the city was paying to ship the waste disposal site. Can you give us an idea of how much of a reduction has occurred in tonnage that we are shipping? Compared to the same time period, August through January from the prior year, which was pre-roll cart, there were 4,281 tons collected during that period as compared to 4,215 tons during the same time period this year. This resulted in a reduction of 65.78 tons or a 1.5% reduction in tonnage. Since these questions were first addressed, the February statistics have been compiled and indicate that an additional reduction in tonnage occurred from the prior February of 9.98 tons. Since implementation of the roll cart program in August of 2013 through the month of February of 2014, the city of Moscow has experienced a total reduction of 75.76 tons. The city of Moscow also has solid waste disposal agreements with Leita County and the cities of Beoville, Deere, Genesee, Julieta, Kendrick, Potlatch, and Troy. As a result of these agreements, the city of Moscow also records collection tonnages from these municipalities. And as you also may be aware, Leita County and the cities mentioned followed Moscow's lead and implemented roll cart collection programs of their own in November of 2013. From November through February, the county experienced a reduction in tonnage of 38.1 tons. These numbers are very encouraging and demonstrate that the attached lids on the roll carts are minimizing precipitation from infiltrating the waste and reducing the amount of unnecessary water weight that the city of Moscow must pay for to transport and dispose of at the Finley-Beuce landfill in Boardman, Oregon. We have had to adapt and make some minor changes and fixes here and there along the way, and folks are becoming comfortable with the program. Several months ago, the city was made aware of a safety concern regarding placement of the carts in the southerly lane of Sixth Street, which flows to the east between Harrison and Blaine Streets. Sixth Street is an east-west flowing arterial with curbside parking adjacent to the northerly lane, which flows to the west. Residents living along the south lane of Sixth were originally asked to set the roll carts off the edge of the curb on the street on collection days. The carts narrowed the south lane for travel to a point that caused legitimate safety concerns. I visited the area of concern with staff from Leita Sanitation, and it was quite evident that the cart placement needed to change. The specific area does have a tree lawn between the curb and the sidewalk, and many of the homes through the area have driveway access from the street as well. After the site visit, I had door hangers printed up for the 30 homes affected by this change, requesting that they place their carts on the edge of the driveway entrance or on that tree lawn. This resolved that issue. So the roll cart program has not been without issues, but we have been able to resolve them as we've transitioned. And I believe it's working very well. So with that, I would like to entertain any questions.
Well, Tim, thank you for that report. And I got to say, you know, whenever you have a change, sometimes people are reluctant for change, and there's a lot of questions and a lot of what-ifs. But the numbers and the statistics that you have showed us tonight prove that this says multiple tons of liquid is being hauled. And that's a huge cost savings for us and for the people here in Moscow. So that's a big deal. So it seems to me like it's working very, very well. Wayne, did you have a question?
Well, just a couple of things. First of all, real quick math, I think that's about 19,000 gallons of water that didn't end up getting paid for. I really like the roll carts. It's so much easier than dragging trash cans out there. It's just unbelievably easy. I did notice, and I still continue to notice, that we have a number of folks that overfill their cans. The lids aren't closed all the way. I went down, the other day, I was going down a particular block, there was a bunch of apartments. And every single one of them, there was, most of them were at least 65-gallon. They were way overfull by a couple of bags stacked on top. One of the carts was turned around backwards, the wheels were facing out instead of against the curb. And one of them was actually knocked over. And so, first question is, I'm assuming that we're still charging addition. If these lids are not closed, they're taking a picture and getting billed for it?
Correct.
If they don't put their carts out properly, in other words, the wheels are facing out instead of in, are they able to still pick them up?
Most of the time, they are. If they're not placed correctly where they can be reached with that automated truck, they're oftentimes left. We did put into place return service, where Leita Sanitation will give each resident one free return service each calendar year. And then after that, there's a fee involved.
And I did notice the can that had tipped over, it was still laying there, tipped over. The driver didn't bother to set it right up and take it, which is just fine. He shouldn't have had. So I think it's working great. I like it. When are we going to get single-stream recycling?
You knew that question was coming, didn't you?
That's a different scenario.
I'm going to go over here to Dan.
Yeah, Tim, following up on Wayne's, I remember in committee, we talked about how if you had somebody that continually did overrides and were getting the penalties on that, explain what you guys have been doing as far as helping to cure that.
When we put in place the roll cart program, we also overhauled the solid waste ordinance to reflect the roll cart program. And we put in place, we're the Director of Solid Waste, which is Gary Redner, which is directed down to me, where we can upgrade folks that have persistent over-service. Or, you know, I generally give folks the benefit of the doubt, but if I see someone that has over-service for four or five weeks in a row, I just go out and switch their cart to the next bigger size. And I haven't heard from one of them yet because in the long run, we're saving them money to get them sized appropriately. So that's how that works. I will mention, too, that when we first put in the computer systems in the trucks and got linked in with Leita Sanitation, so they knew exactly what was supposed to be at the curbside. That program first started, we were seeing some months over 2,000 extras a month. And now we're seeing down around 300 to 400 a month. So it is working. You know, it's slow to get those last few folks on board. But I think for the most part, we got the word out and convinced people that the price difference between the sizes of the carts was far less than one over-service. So size yourself appropriately and allow for those occasional extras. And then, you know, we don't want to be sitting here nickel-and-dimeing folks each week if we don't have to, so.
Tom?
I noticed the same issue that you were talking about on Sixth Street in a few other locations. I think primarily, we see those in bike lanes. And, you know, hopefully, the trucks are picking them up and getting them out of the way fast enough that they don't have that much of an impact. And, you know, bikes can go around and just travel in the travel lane. There may be other spots. I think along Mountain View, there were some tight spots, too, on the south.
There are a few tricky areas. We're getting most of them weeded out. And I did meet with the Transportation Commission early on in the process and discussed with them cart placement. And it was kind of, the discussion kind of went, you know, would we rather, if we have to have those off the curb, block a bike lane for one day a week or block a sidewalk to where a wheelchair couldn't get through? And a lot of it comes back to the residents themselves. And if they remove those carts in a timely fashion, that's the key, I think. Because we have to give those folks access to get that stuff picked up.
And my second comment was that I've noticed a few folks kind of just leaving them out there for the week and not necessarily picking them up within the 24 hours. Perhaps this is a good opportunity for those people that are watching tonight.
And when I'm made aware of those instances, I will definitely call the homeowner or the folks renting and explain to them why they need to have that, you know, rolled back in and what those wheels are for, so.
Thanks for doing that.
You bet.
One question, if I may?
Go ahead.
The folks that are on the on-demand, the way that works is the truck comes, and if it detects a container there, then they're supposed to get charged for that?
If the cart is wheeled out for service, it's considered set out for service and it's dumped. And if they don't want it serviced, then they're required to pull it back in from the regular collection areas.
Thanks, Tim. Okay, well, thank you very much, Tim, for that good report.
Thank you.
Okay, and we will move on to item eight, which is our standard construction drawing revision for 2014. Les, would you, McDonald, will present?
Mayor Lambert, members of the council. Kevin Lilly is actually supposed to be here this evening doing this presentation, but he had a bit of a family emergency, so he had to step away. So I get to take his place. Hopefully, I'll be able to convey what he wanted to convey to you this evening. Those before you is a new set of standard construction drawings. These have been in the works for quite some time. The last set of drawings that were adopted by the city was in 2006. So these are definitely timely in terms of a need for some revisions. And there are a number of revisions to these drawings that may be of importance that I'll try to point out along the way. I will tell you right off the bat, the biggest changes probably are in the areas of the actual street sections, the street standards. And so we can spend a little time on that, talk about those if you desire. But to start with, I'll just kind of run through some of the, you know, more major items, I guess, within the drawing set. Keeping in mind that a lot of what was done within the drawings is really just, you know, editorial things where we're cleaning up, you know, an area that needed clarification, something that we found, working with the contractors, that just really wasn't quite working right. And so we've made adjustments to fix that within our drawings, either to work with the construction practices that are going on out in the field today, or to comply with some of the newer standards pertaining to things like pedestrian ramps and ADA access, things of that nature. First off, the order of the drawings has been revised. You know, it's not a big deal, but it just, there are some changes for those. Some of those folks are used to working with our standards. They're saying, hey, you know, it's standard drawing, number 14. That may be something different today. So just something to be aware of. As I mentioned, some of the most significant changes are in the street standard sections. Those are in drawings 1A through 1H. I'm not planning on showing all these on the screen tonight, but if there are questions about some of them, I can scroll to those if so desired. You have these in your packet. Hopefully, you've had a chance to at least take a peek at them. One of the items that was an addition within the street standard details is that we added a collector parking detail. And if you'll recall, recently, there was a subdivision came through called Harvest Hills that the council looked at. And one of the items that was in discussion during that process was, there was a collector street passing through the subdivision. The collector street standards do not require parking. The proposed standard does not require parking either. But there was a desire on the behalf of the council to have parking at least one side. When Transportation Commission looked at these, they also recognized the need for parking at times on one or both sides of the street, depending on the situation. It's not in all cases, but in some cases. And so a detail was added to, in essence, show how parking could be added to a collector-type street in those situations where we'd want to do that, similar to what the council just required on that Harvest Hills development. That is detail number one E. One of the things that's consistent among all of the street standards that are in the revised drawings are that sidewalks are now a minimum of five feet in width. Historically, we've required a four-foot minimum, so a lot of the walks within the city are four feet. Under the ADA standards dealing with passing of wheelchairs and multiple pedestrians on a sidewalk or a pathway system, four feet's just not wide enough. You can't get two standard-sized wheelchairs past each other on a four-foot-wide sidewalk. You can do it in five feet, barely, if you have a wider... You can do it in five feet, barely, um, if you have a wider than standard wheelchair, then even that's a challenge, but at least for normal-sized wheelchairs, you can make it work with a five foot. So the ADA has encouraged that, um, you design facilities that can accommodate, uh, passing of wheelchairs in a five-foot walk would get us there. In the proposed standards, um, the local streets would have a five-foot minimum, when you get into collectors and arterial, minor arterials, they go up in size, uh, six feet or seven feet, depending on the area they're in. In commercial zones, we're going to a wider sidewalk, a seven-foot walk, to accommodate that higher pedestrian usage that you would normally see in a commercial zone, similar to downtown. Uh, there is a new detail for public alleys, uh, we have, uh, over the years promoted development in subdivisions that include alleys at the rear of the lots, and yet we didn't really have a detail to, you know, show folks how to build that. So there's a standard, um, detail number two now for public alleys. We've also included a detail for private streets, uh, that has often been a question when we're dealing with certain types of private development that want to include private streets for their internal circulation, but the question always came about, well, what should they build? How should, big should it be? You know, what's the section? Is it large enough for a fire truck? Should there be sidewalks on it? Things of that nature. So there is now a standard detail number three, that is, uh, private driveways as a minimum that we would accept, they can all, or, excuse me, private streets, they can always go bigger than that, they can add to it, but it's at least the, the basic minimum that we would require as a city for private streets that need to serve the residents of that particular development and the fire access needs. One of the items that has drawn a lot of attention, I think, over the last year or so, and certainly was discussed a lot with Transportation Commission, uh, and the Fire Department, is the size of cul-de-sacs. Uh, the current standards that we have in place today from two thousand and six include a sixty-foot diameter cul-de-sac and a eighty-foot diameter cul-de-sac. Uh, neither one of those meet the, uh, fire code as adopted by the City of Moscow, which actually requires ninety-six feet. Uh, again, that was something that was recently talked about, uh, with the City Council, uh, on a subdivision, and what type of requirement should be in place based on the needs of the Fire Department for access to, um, the subdivisions and the, and the developments within those subdivisions, or other types of improvements on cul-de-sac streets. The standard that's proposed now actually has an eighty-foot diameter paved section, so curb-to-curb, plus five-foot sidewalks to the outside, so that gets you to the ninety, and then there's a four-foot brick paver strip behind the walk. And the intent of that is to, with that brick paver strip, is really just to preserve the overhang area, because when a fire truck is turning, the front wheel is gonna maybe run up onto that curb, maybe, out there at, at the forty, forty-four foot, um, radius, but the front bumper hangs out so far that it's gonna hang out quite a ways beyond that front wheel. And so they don't have to drive on that entire ninety-six feet, they're actually driving on something smaller than that, but the bumper's going to swing out to ninety-six-foot diameter. So that's why do, going to a brick paver system, that's intended to just prevent, you know, poles and, and mailboxes and things of that nature going in there, but preserves that air space, if you will, for that bumper to swing around in the cul-de-sac. And again, if there are questions along these, along the way, please feel free to stop me. Um, we did add a temporary turnaround detail, there, there are, I think, two or three, uh, options in there for temporary turnarounds, uh, it's detail number five. Um, and again, in the past, we've seen a lot of temporary turnaround situations, a street that may be extended in the future, it's on the edge of a cul-de-sac, or, excuse me, the edge of a subdivision, what do you put in? And so now we have a, a detail that addresses the things that, the types that are acceptable, um, for the city for, uh, uh, public access and for fire access. There are a couple of, um, gutter-type details, and we added a valley gutter, which is something new, uh, most folks are familiar with the standard curb and gutter situation, there are cases where you need something that convey water, and so a valley gutter just takes that and lays it down, so in essence, it's a little valley, just carries water across a parking lot, or, uh, a street intersection that has certain grade challenges.
Hey, I was thinking, Wes. Quick question, when you're talking about alleys, what type of surface are you requiring on them now?
Alleys?
Yeah.
Uh, they would be paved.
They have to be paved.
Asphalt paved, yes.
The new ones.
The new ones, yes. Uh, there have been a few questions about, um, you know, what's the curb radius, uh, when certain streets come together, local streets, local versus collector, collector versus arterial, so we've added some additional information in the details, uh, about the required radius of the curb, uh, in those situations.
Dan?
And I guess that's one thing that I remember in, in, uh, committee that we talked about is, um, instead of saying, I think residential streets, we're saying local streets, as, as far as our, kind of our, our classification, is that the, the federal and state standard, or is that what we're coming up with?
Right, pretty much that's the federal approach anymore, um, you know, the, the residential street conveys that it's in a residential neighborhood, but that's not always the case.
No, no, exactly.
And so what they've gone to is local, meaning, you know, just on a smaller scale, serving local needs, rather than something like a collector or arterial, so local is the new term for what we've been calling residential.
Thanks.
In the sidewalk drawing detail number seven, we've now added a, a public pathway detail, because we're seeing more and more pathway construction throughout the city, did not have a standard for that, uh, so we've included that with the, the section that's required in minimum width, asphalt pathways in that situation. The pedestrian ramps in, now in detail number eight, have been updated to reflect the new American Disabilities Act, ADA requirements, they're much more stringent than they used to be in, in how those requirements are interpreted, uh, and so, uh, we needed to modify and, and update our standards to, um, make sure that we remain in compliance, uh, with the ADA standards. And then, uh, driveway approach, uh, detail number twelve, uh, in the past, the driveway grade standards that are in here were only applied to, uh, commercial situations, parking lots over five, parking stalls, uh, we're, we're broadening that to address other situations, uh, both commercial and residential, uh, so that we don't end up with some of those, you know, inordinately steep driveways that we've all seen around town here and there, um, and we end up with driveways that are considered usable and functional throughout the course of the year, and that can meet the off-street parking requirements that are managed through the Community Development Department. In the, um, Public Works Finance Committee meeting on this, uh, there was a request that the local street standard have a modification made, um, and let me, before I go much further in that, let me back up just a moment and say that the street standards that are proposed here, uh, were really undertaken by the Transportation Commission. We spent, you know, over a year, almost a year and a half, going through every nuance and detail of a street section, um, and the corridor within which the street, sidewalks, pedestrian routes, bicycle routes, tree strip, plant strips, everything have to reside. Uh, and we started with the perspective of, you know, simple as how wide should a travel lane be? How wide should a sidewalk be? How wide should a tree lawn be? What type of curb makes sense? And, and built all those pieces, put them all together, in the end, that is what is in these, um, proposed drawings.
Brings up a good question I've got to ask here, Les. So, some of the recommendations in the drawings are not necessarily state-driven or federal-driven, they're what our Transportation Commission came up with on their own, and how the design of the street should be, is that correct?
It's a bit of a combination. Um, when, you know, the Transportation Commission was the body that went through the process with support from staff, to look at all of those details and come up with recommendations on changes to our previous standards. They looked at items like, um, you know, fire requirements, fire access, that was a big one, so that was gonna be a code-driven component. They looked at the livability aspects, so things like, uh, the width of a tree lawn, should we have tree lawns? Well, yes, we're Tree City USA, we need a place to plant trees in the public right-of-way, so yes, we should have that. How big should they be? Well, we have tree standards, uh, as adopted by our Parks and Recreation Commission, as to what types of trees are appropriate within a tree lawn, okay? What do each of those require? So then they come up with a minimum size. So it was a combination of things like that, some of them were local, um, livability issues within the community, some of them were other code issues in our own codes, some of them were things like the International Fire Code that are on a much larger scale, and then all that got blended together as we looked at all the individual components to eventually get to what's here today.
And that brings another, another question, and I'll let you continue on, 'cause you said this early in your presentation, how long has it been that the Transportation Committee's been working on this? A year and a half, is that what you said?
They worked, yeah, as I recall, about a year and a half, roughly, uh, and it has taken a while to get from there to here, I will say that.
Sure.
Um, you know, they, they completed their work, uh, some time ago, frankly, and then, um, engineering has been working on all the rest of the standard details, plus incorporating what transportation's recommended to finally get to where we are today.
Tom, did you have a question?
I did about, I did about, um, uh, the driveway approach page. Um, I was just, number, yeah, I guess that's, oh, number nine.
Drawing nine.
Drawing nine. Um, I, the question has to do with the one and three-quarter inch lip at the, at the opening.
Mm-hmm.
Um, why is it that big?
It is that big to, as much as possible, retain the water in the curb line that's passing down through the, the section of the street.
Okay.
If you get much lower than that, and we are starting to see this in, in the ADA ramps now, you start to get ponding, and it tends to back up into that ramp.
That makes sense.
So on, on site, on driveways, because it's not an ADA access, it's a, it's a tire access, you can be a little bit taller.
When I'm on a bike, and I'm approaching, there's like, say, for example, the corner of D and Main Street, there's that gas station that just did the remodel.
The Senex, yes.
Um, if I turn right at a shallow angle, I'm hitting a really steep lip there, and so I have to actually kinda swing out into the street and then turn in, so I'm going out into traffic and then turning in, because I wanna hit perpendicular, if I don't, then I'm spilling across the sidewalk. So, um, I, I thought maybe it was because somebody was gonna come and raise the street later and put down another asphalt level or layer.
At times, that does happen, but that's not the intent.
So it's, it's intended just to help let the water flow through there.
Deal with the drainage and prevent the ponding.
Those kinds of things.
Right. And part of what can happen, and, and again, we are starting to see this in the ADA ramps, because they require flush through their no-lip wall.
Right, exactly.
Which is one of the changes.
Exactly.
But when you see our new ramp construction now, you'll start seeing more instances of puddling and ponding, the base of those ramps, and then it collects a little bit of mud, and a little dirt, a little debris starts to build up, it gets icy sometimes in the winter, so that's one of the challenges with trying to go smaller or flush.
So these are gonna be harder for somebody in a wheelchair.
Well, again, these are driveways.
A driveway, not a road.
So these are intended for wheelchair access.
Well, right, but people sometimes have to use them.
Right.
Give them a situation.
That does happen.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
So, um, oh, yes, the Transportation Commission, uh, spent quite a bit of time, uh, in your packet is a summary document that, um, was put together during that process, um, and I have added to that in the italics, kind of the status report, if you will, hopefully you've had a chance to look through that. Uh, really what, uh, that is intended to do is to convey, uh, to the council, some of the thoughts of the commission related to various components within the, the standard street drawings. Uh, there are some items in there that are not included in the street drawings, because they require action other than the standard drawings. For instance, some of them talk about, um, you know, things like, uh, limiting driveway access, limiting access from adjacent properties. Well, that is an access control, uh, management kinda process, that is not a standard construction drawing issue. So that's something we would take up separately. There are some items in there that are also really zoning-related questions that eventually would have to go through Community Development and P and Z and, and back to council. So there are some other processes, um, that are suggested, um, because of transportation's work that we'll wanna look at in the future. Hopefully, I've identified where those are, um, clearly enough. Uh, the, the one item I did wanna point out is that, one of the recommendations of the Transportation Commission was that the local street be a thirty-four-foot wide street, and in reviewing that, um, with my staff, and reviewing it with the fire marshal, um, the marshal and I both came to the recommendation that it should be a thirty-six-foot wide street. The reason for that recommendation, thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
The reason for that recommendation is the thirty-four-foot street with parking on both sides only leaves eighteen feet of travel lane for two travel, two travel lanes, so nine feet each lane, eighteen feet in total. That's pretty narrow, and there's some benefit to that in the traffic calming, which is why Transportation recommended it. But, the fire access codes, under the International Fire Code adopted by the city, require at least twenty feet of travel lane. So if you've got two cars parked on either side of the roadway, you're down to eighteen feet, there, it's a non-compliant section, if you will. So our recommendation that was presented to the, um, Public Works Finance Committee was that we go to a thirty-six foot, that's what's in the packet, that's before you this evening, they supported that, um, asked that we change it from the thirty-four originally shown to the thirty-four that's in here now.
The thirty-six is in there now.
Thirty-six is in here now, from thirty-four to thirty-six, thirty-six in the package now. Okay. All right, um, last two things. Late last week, we received a contact from one of the local engineers requesting that we consider a revision to the street standards, and it has to do, um, with the question of property pins, and I'll just pick on one of these drawings real quick, something like this one, which is the collector street. And what you'll see on all but really one of these drawings, on these cross-sections, is that the sidewalk is shown as being with the rear, placed with the rear of the sidewalk right at the property line, or the right-of-way line, okay? And that's intentional, in that we're trying to leave as much room out there as we can for planter strips, for planting trees, any potential future widening of the right-of-way, or, excuse me, of the, the road section for either bike lanes or turn lanes, or bus pullouts, things of that nature. But what it does is it puts the property corner for each of those lots adjacent to the, to the street right at the back of the sidewalk. So setting a property pin becomes problematic, because now you're right up against the back of the walk, and if anything's done to the walk, that pin gets disturbed, maybe removed, damaged, whichever. So the request that came in was that we consider moving those sidewalks one-half foot in off of the property lines, which in all cases except for, um, the thirty-six-foot local, we can do, we can accommodate. And that way, we would avoid that conflict between the concrete sidewalk and the property pins and any future damage. So, uh, staff would be supportive of making that revision if the council would like to include that in its consideration and, and, uh, decisions to see.
Yeah. So, why, why couldn't you do it on the thirty-six-foot street? I mean, you've all, you've got, I'm assuming we're trying to get at least fifty-foot of right-of-way in, in, um, residential areas?
Here's, here's why. Uh, this is the thirty-six-foot local street, and I realize it's a little hard to see for those in the audience, but, um, what we have is a sixty-foot right-of-way.
Okay.
We have the thirty-six-foot street section with half-foot curbs on both sides, so I think it's just thirty-seven feet. We're maintaining a minimum eight-foot planter strip, which was considered the minimum for our street tree program.
Okay, so that's, that's your hang.
Five-foot walk, that gets us to a total of sixty-three feet. So, in this situation, we also have easements to the outside of the sixty-foot right-of-way to accommodate the last foot and a half of sidewalk.
Okay.
And so moving it a half a foot's not gonna help us in that situation.
It was the, the tree lawn was, is the hang at them.
Yeah, and, and, you know, in, in the tree lawn, we've maintained a minimum of eight feet, we do allow for reductions to five feet in certain situations, uh, as approved by the city engineer.
Terrain and whatnot.
Mainly topography-driven, right? Or just some conflict that you just cannot deal with in some way, maybe it's a building or something of that nature. Uh, but the, but the intent of the Transportation Commission was really to support the ability to plant trees and do landscaping that's appropriate within the tree lawns.
Would it make sense to have a, a wider right-of-way?
Well, that would be one way to address it, um, you know, when, when we got to this before, and we were using the thirty-four, we had a sixty-one-foot section, so it's like, eh, half a foot either side out in there, thought it was probably all right to stick with the easement approach for the sidewalk. Do we go to a sixty-four-foot right-of-way? Sixty-five? We could, um, you know, we're also trying to be cognizant of the issue of how much land do we take up?
Right.
For local streets that are typically through subdivisions, things of that nature, so, you know, trying to keep it contained as, as best we can.
One of the things that you do run into, and Dan brought up a good point, but something that you do run into, the, the bigger the size of the right-of-way you take, then the less room for lots and that type of thing, any kind of a subdivision, and those of us that have been on pass, planning and zoning, run into that whenever we've seen, you know, developments come in front of us, and sometimes those developments come in front of the council because of, you know, uh, and we need to end up resolving them, but that sometimes does become an issue. Wayne?
I agree with, uh, just kinda what I was gonna say, Bill, too, along to that particular, um, thought, is, we have a developer, and the developer has fifty acres that they decided they- they want to try to put in the residential. The more we require in right-of-way, and the more developing that we require them to do as far as streets and sidewalks and curbs and green spaces, the less profit there is for the developer.
Sure.
And I'm just kind of curious as to these changes that we're doing, and I don't imagine anybody sat down with a pencil and figured out what's the percentage of increase in cost to a developer to do this. But I think we start looking at, at an area where, you know, these are nice and it's great to have these things if we're going to have cars and we're going to have bicycles, which we are. But, but there's got to be a point finally to where we have to think about the developer also and his costs, and is it, what's going to be happening to them? What's his bottom line? How's that going to be affected?
Yeah, really, the, the items that are included for the level of improvement really are not, you know, significantly different than our current standards. We're still requiring a street section, curb gutter, sidewalk on both sides, space for trees, utilities that go underneath. Where the changes are really are in going to a local street as the standard, the thirty-six-foot, where in a sixty-foot right-of-way. In some situations before, you saw a fifty-foot right-of-way with a twenty-eight-foot wide street. And so, there is one change in, in land dedication, if you will, there. The actual street sections themselves, other than from a thirty-four to a thirty-six-foot, so two feet of asphalt, well, and I guess the sidewalk width from four to five feet, those are really the changes in the actual infrastructure. So, you know, it's pretty consistent with what we've been doing for quite a while and really what all other agencies out there are requiring anymore.
One more question. Gary, Wayne, continue. Thirty-six street, is that considered a collector street?
Thirty-six foot is a local street, all right, in this particular Detail 1A, which accommodates the twenty-foot of travel lanes and parking on both sides.
On each side.
Okay, to get to thirty-six. And then, the collector is actually also, well, it's actually a thirty-four-foot street, but it does not include parking.
On either side.
On either side. So, it is two twelve-foot lanes, because on a collector, a little bit higher speed, definitely higher volume, so you need a little bit wider lane. Instead of ten, you go to twelve. And then it has bike lanes.
Where I was going to go with this particular question was if a developer decides when he's going to do his preliminary plat in his neighborhood streets, he decides, is it his option to have parking only on one side and have a narrower street, therefore a narrower right-of-way?
If he would like to do, well, it depends on the class of the street.
A what?
The classification of the street, right? If he's doing a, a local street section, it'll be thirty-six feet, sixty-foot right-of-way, parking on both sides. That, that becomes the standard local street in the city of Moscow. Okay, parking on both sides and twenty feet of travel lanes, okay, two ten-foot lanes, sixty-foot right-of-way. The only way to vary from that would be a variance through the council, or in a few select situations, we would allow what we're calling the alternate local street, which is this twenty-eight-foot wide standard 1B. Now, this is similar to the one we have today. We have a twenty-eight-foot standard today. But its use here would be limited to cul-de-sacs or streets that are really only going to be extendable for one or two blocks. We're trying to avoid that situation where you end up with a very narrow street that becomes a through street serving multiple subdivisions, all right? Because we've seen that in town and it's a bit problematic. So, we do still have a twenty-eight-foot street standard. It is using a sixty-foot right-of-way still, compared, you know, similar to the, to the regular local, but it is a little bit narrower street.
That has parking on one side.
Parking on one side. Now, if you are in an area that has a collector passing through from our street classifications map, then you'd have to build to a collector standard, which is a seventy-foot right-of-way, but the street section without turn lanes is, is thirty-four feet with bike lanes.
And no parking.
And no parking. Now, if there's a desire to add parking or to require parking, similar to what we saw just a couple of weeks ago, that's where this detail comes into effect, which is that collector parking option. So, what you see here is the normal collector width, thirty-four feet, two twelve-foot lanes, the bike lanes on either, both sides, and then these, what I call pods, that extend out and then drop back in, where we would have on-street parking available, you know, either one side or both sides, depending on the situation and the desire of the council and the developer.
Thank you. Go ahead.
And the last thing is you have a resolution in your packet this evening, that it would be the process for adopting these, if the council so chooses. Would remind the council that if there's a desire to accommodate the one request that we were not able to capture in the drawings in the short time we had to move those sidewalks in one-half foot, you would need to include that in your motion for adoption of the resolution.
While we ask Les' number of questions, is there other questions for Les that the council would like to ask this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Dan? Then I would like to make a motion that we approve the revised standard construction drawings and the related resolution, including the survey pin modification that Les talked about for the property lines.
Okay, Dan made the motion.
I'll second.
And John made a second. Any discussion on it? We will start with Art.
Hi.
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 Okay, that resolution has passed with the one-half foot, as you described it, last for the pin markings. And this is resolution number?
Two thousand fourteen zero six.
Zero six. And I will read that real quick. Resolution number twenty-fourteen dash zero six, a resolution of the City of Moscow, Idaho, Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, adopting amended standard construction drawings relating to the construction of public streets and utilities within the city limits. Thank you, Les. And the next thing is item number nine. This has to do with our bid results for the Moscow School District playfields, and Gary Redner will present to us.
Thank you, Your Honor. This project is very familiar to the mayor and council. I won't go into a lot of history on it, except to say that from direction of the council and the Moscow School District Board of Trustees, up to a, an amount of one-point-five million dollars from the city and from the Moscow School District Board, we have partnered on the development of the Joseph Street playfields, which have been named now the Moscow School District Community Playfields. We went through, council's familiar with the project, familiar with the process that was employed. There was an authorized representatives committee that, consisting of Walter Steed, Dwight Curtis, myself on behalf of the city, a Moscow School District trustee, Deb Adair, business manager, and Greg Bailey, superintendent of Moscow School District. Also was employed a plant, design planning team, consisting of stakeholders as well as staffed by representatives of the city, the school district. Bill Belknap, Les McDonald were, and Dwight were also on that committee, as well as representatives in the Moscow School District. The design team for the project was Design West in conjunction with the land group and Hodge and Associates in Moscow. A design was put together. It was duly advertised according to law. Bid opening was April first. Prior to that process being let out to bid, there were cost estimates and design review, the ARC, was consulted. The superintendent, myself, Bill, Deb Adair, were asked to look at different concepts to determine, okay, how much money did we have to do the job? How much, how much project could we get for that? And how could we maximize the amount of project we could get for the three million dollars total gross cost, which came out to approximately a construction project of two million five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars after contingency, after design costs and all the ancillary costs that go along with that. After several meetings, there was a base bid or a base project that was going to be bid out. That base bid included the drainage for the fields, the fields themselves, backstops, parking lot, those sorts of amenities. And then, there were identified different alternates. In your packet, you have bid results from the bid opening of April first that reference those different alternates. Dugouts were an alternate, as were scoreboards, storage building. And I forgot to mention, in the base bid, there is a bathroom concession building that has a second floor for observation of the three competition fields around the main field area of the project. So, the ARC authorized that, and we reported to council and the Moscow School Board of Trustees, that there would be the base bid, and I believe there were twelve alternates, Bill, am I correct? Those twelve alternates were meant to address all of those issues. Should we be lucky enough to get some good bids that we could then select alternates depending on the amount of money that was left over after the base bid? Twelve alternates is quite a few, but it provides maximum flexibility and allows you to be able to maximize any extra money that you have when doing the project. Bid opening was set for April first. I attended, as it did Bill Belknap, Moscow School District Superintendent and Business Manager, and Mayor Lambert just happened to be in my office, so he came along as well. Greg Papino was there. The, suffice it to say, as the CCSR points out, we were not on a, lucky enough to get conservative bids. The base bid of the project came in at three million, excuse me, two million. The apparent low bidder came in at two million nine-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. Again, as I indicated, the base bid estimate was, or the construction part of the project was two million five-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So, we are in essence between four hundred and four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars short money to take advantage of the base bid. Remember, the base bid does not include the dugouts, does not include the scoreboards, does not include the storage shed and nine different other amenities that go along with what we had hoped and what we had designed the project to entail. So, we were a little bit surprised by that. And since last Tuesday, when the bid opening occurred, staff has been working with the project architect to try and determine what the reason was for the bids. As I said, the estimate for just the base bid was off by at least fifteen percent. So, and there was a professional estimator whose services were retained for this project. When the bids were opened, it was discussed that there are a lot of capital projects going on right now. At the airport, quarterly regional breakfast meeting last Wednesday, I had the good fortune of sitting next to a gentleman in charge of facilities at Washington State University, indicated that they had in excess of two hundred million dollars of active projects at this time, not all on the WSU campus, but a significant amount of money over there under construction. Idaho has a bunch of projects under construction. Pullman High School at a bond of sixty-six million dollars is being designed and will go out to bid. Moscow High School, eight-point-five million. The Colton School District, ten million. So, there are significant capital projects that are going around. One thing we noticed on the bids as they came in is that almost all of the bidders, the three, there were three responses to the bids. The subs, subcontractors for almost all the bidders were the same, which is pretty strange. We had bidders from pretty good coverage. I think Bill told me this morning, there were sixteen plan centers that had access to these plans. So, it was a nationwide effort that we expected that we would get some good responses. We had, as I said, three respondents. But if you look at the yellow portion at the far right-hand of the bid sheet that I've given you, you can see that a lot of the subs are local and a lot of the subs are the same. The speculation is that there is plenty of work out there. This project does not, did not bid at an, at a prime time. Most of these contractors already have their work for the upcoming construction season. The prime optimal time to bid out a project is October through perhaps mid-February, end of February. So, this was just not the right time. But it fit in with the council and the Board of Trustees timeframe, that the idea was to get this thing out, get these fields constructed so that the kids could play on them as soon as possible. So, as I indicated, on the base bid, we're between four hundred and four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars out. Whenever you look at options, you've got to look at a couple of different things. One is just inject more money into the project. Two is look for places to save and see if you can do some deducts off the project. And three, the more likely scenario is to do a combination of both. And of course, there's always four. And four, well, four could be abandon the project altogether. Five would be perhaps reject all bids and then wait and bid at a more opportune time. What we're doing at this time is interacting with the project architect. Bill's done a lot of work with Ned Warnock, who has done the work for Design West. One of the things we don't want to do is we, it doesn't make a lot of sense to rebid the project if your bidding climate isn't going to change. If there's that much work out there, we need to assess whether or not a recommendation to rebid will in fact yield any savings. Secondly, we're looking at the responses as close as we can to determine what the reason was for them, the estimator being so far off on the estimate. And if it is in fact because of the market, because of the amount of work that's available at this point, then you just have to look and see how much work there is out there, how long that is going to last, and whether you will realize significant savings by delaying. Then, of course, there's the idea of looking and determining if there are some things that can be deducted out of the project that will not significantly negatively impact the project. And alternatively, and usually in conjunction with, whether we could inject some more capital into the project to make it happen on the timeframe that the council and the Board of Trustees wants to proceed with. As I said, we're in the process of doing all of that right now. I'm not prepared to make a recommendation to you at this time. The ARC will be meeting on Wednesday, discussing what we found out from the architects and determining what sort of recommendation we want to bring forth. The design planning team will be meeting on Thursday to take a look at whether or not any of those recommendations would significantly impact the design. In the meantime, we'll be doing that economic analysis, both from a financial and a market determination, to determine whether or not rebidding would significantly assist us. And if the council and the board decides to move ahead, what additional injection of capital it would take to get the project done that the council and the community contemplated. So, all of that is going on right now. Have no real recommendation for you at this point. It's too soon. The bids are good for forty-five days, so we have a little time. However, we're still proceeding expeditiously, not with breakneck speed, because we don't want to break our necks, obviously. We want to get as good information as we can, but in order to preserve the very aggressive timeframe for construction, if the decision is to move forward in this construction season, we don't have a lot of time to play with. If you recall, the original plan was to open bids on the first. We would have a, they would be taken to council tonight, and they would go to the school board tomorrow night. So, as it sits right now, I'm here to give you a report. Met with Superintendent Bailey and Deb Adair and Bill this morning to determine what sort of report would come forward. Superintendent Bailey will be giving a similar report to his board that you're getting tonight, just that we are working. We will work diligently to try and get you some recommendation or at least a list of alternatives sometime next week. We're also working on potentially having a joint meeting between the council and the Board of Trustees. We're getting to the point where if there needs to be some additional work done on this, and if there is a consideration for additional funding coming forth or cutting some things out of the project, that we will need both elected bodies to weigh in on that. And the best way to do that is to sit around- And the best way to do that is to sit around the table and talk about it. So, again, we should have some answer on that toward the middle to the end of this week, and we'll set that up as quickly as we can. Happy to answer any questions I can, but there's not a lot more information out there than the one I've just given.
I've got a couple of comments I would like to make on this, Gary, because this has been a work in progress for quite some time, and hopefully the folks in Moscow really recognize, as the school boards worked hard on this, the whole entire school district, as well as our Superintendent Greg Bailey, the city of Moscow has as well. This project at Ballfields has been going on for a number of years. This is something that's been a work in progress for quite some time. And I've got to tell you something, not only the school board and the school district, as well as the city, there's been a number of groups out there, the Moscow Baseball Association, for example, a number of volunteer people that have spent countless hours trying to make things work. And I'm going to, this is a statement I want to make, folks, we need to figure out a way to make this thing work. And the project has got to be done, and it's got to be done in the proper fashion. That's my point of view. Of course, I'm just one person, I'm the mayor, but that's how I see it. You know, if you have ball fields, you're going to have to have backstops. You have ball fields, you're going to have to have dugouts. And we need to think about this process. If we're going to do this thing, we need to do it right. And as Gary said, I was there because I wanted to see the process with this bid and how it worked, and see the players in action. And one of the things, and Gary mentioned, there was 16 of these sheets had been sent out for bids around, and we got three of them back. And that's just telling you the scope of work that a number of different firms throughout the region, not just here in Moscow, but throughout this entire region, and they're very, very busy doing things. And so, I suspect, as well as a bunch of others, that's why we have a higher bid process than what was actually thought of. But it's something that we're going to need to work, and we're going to have to buckle down and do something on this relatively quickly. And if we ever work together, this is the time, folks, that we need to make it happen. Now I'll open it up to the council for any questions yet. Tom?
Well, I just wanted to spend a few minutes just trying to figure out, the money piece of it right now is we're off $500,000, roughly.
For the base bid?
For the base bid.
Which does not give you the project that you approved.
It doesn't include any of those alternatives. Right. So, we, so your two alternatives that you said that are the go-forward alternatives were either cut something from the base bid, or find another half a million dollars.
If I can qualify that.
So let me, I just, that's what I wanted to, I wanted to hear more about those two pieces.
Okay. And again, I'm just telling you, that's the approach.
Sure.
Not suggesting that either of those approaches will work, mainly because, Tom, we don't have all the information we need. As I indicated, one of the assessments-
We don't know the person that's going to write the big check for that.
Well, that's a big piece of it, but, you know, if it turns out that the bids are inflated because of some reason other than that's the market at this point, then it doesn't make sense to proceed and just pay an overage because you're essentially being held up. And I'm not saying that that's what's happening, but we don't have enough information at this point. If it is the market, then the council needs to assess, or we all need to assess, that how long will this last? And rebidding is really the alternative. If you don't take advantage of these, if you reject them, you're back where you were. Either rebid right away, or you wait till a more opportune time. Whether there's deducts that can be done in the process, or in the, in the project, whether there is an opportunity for additional money, that's what we still need to flesh out. So, those are just two typical approaches. We haven't fleshed out either one of those at this point.
Art had a question, Dan.
Yeah, regarding the deductions from the base bid, say we start saying, let's pull this out, pull this out, pull this out. Doesn't it in fact have to sort of go back out to be rebid by the contractors anyway? And how far does that progress before we wind up with going right back to scratch anyway?
Yeah, and certainly you can't change the nature of the project. If you significantly change the project, then yes, you have to go back out.
A million is pretty significant.
Well, again, these are just all potential-
Do you just ask the low bidder, you know, what could you come back with, or do you have to ask all three respondents?
We would have to consult legal counsel to determine how to do that, if it is at all possible. So, but suffice it to say that if the project changes significantly, then it needs to go back out. And right now, you have an apparent low bidder, but that bidder has not been qualified, you're not being given a recommendation, that the bidder has met all the statutory and bidding requirements to be named a successful bidder. That's all held in abeyance as we, I mean, we are not going to anyone saying, hey, can you do it for this, can you do it for this? What we're doing is trying to determine what the ultimate scope of the project will be, based upon the bids that we've received. Bill?
John?
Yeah, Gary, with the 12 amendments to the construction agreement, what is, if we got all 12 of them?
Probably around-
Six million.
Yeah, about $800,000 more than we have in construction at this point, roughly. I'm just, and there may be some, we do have a slight contingency, smaller contingency than we would like, but there's a chance that we could cut that a little bit. Those are all things being looked at, John, but yeah, I'd say about $800,000 roughly to get the entire project.
Plus the $450,000 that we thought we were not going to have to-
No, that would include that.
That would be all of it, John.
Bill, go ahead. Bill actually has worked the numbers more, better than-
Bill Belknap, we will hear from you next.
So if you're looking at the base bid on the project and all 12 alternates, the total cost of those for the apparent low bidder was $1,044,120 above the, the project construction budget.
Say that number again?
That is the base project plus all 12 alternates. It was not the expectation that all 12 alternates would have been selected, though. I mean, those were individual components that were priced separately so that the district and the city could look at what elements we would like to add in the project, look at the priorities, and see how deep that could go. Ultimately, the cost estimate for the base bid was right about at our construction budget. There is a little bit of money in contingency, a couple hundred thousand dollars that was in contingency, that you possibly, possibly could have looked at to add an alternative to, of items if the pricing came in in a favorable way. But it was never the expectation that we were going to be awarding the base bid and all 12 ad-alternates. Those were always priced to give the district and the city options to look at pricing on elements and amenities that we'd like to add to the project. Ultimately, the, the hope was the base bid project that included all the field improvements, the parking lot, the restroom concession facility, along with the six dugouts and the maintenance building would be achievable in the project. That was, that was the hope. If we got favorable bids, we would be able to reach that point. That number right now is about $558,000 out of the money that was available for the construction project. There are some things that are being examined in some of the spec, some, some potential substitutions, not changing the material nature of the project, that could yield some cost savings, and so we are examining some of that. But I think there will be a recommendation that we'll be formulating with the district that will be coming forward to the council for your consideration, as well as the trustees.
And, and again, the numbers that, the numbers that Bill just gave you, the numbers that I gave you, we're looking at how much of the contingency we can utilize. Are there alternatives that can be identified in the project itself to determine what that would be? And of course, you don't have to choose all 12 alternates either. The 12 alternates and the base bid were what was designed, but you only have such and such a budget, so you prioritize those, and that's what the ARC and the DPT did, Design Planning Team. And that was presented to the council and the board.
Well, there's no real action we have to take, other than wait and hear what's going on.
Yeah, it's merely a report.
We're all disappointed, obviously. Just make it some million dollars more than what we'd anticipated to actually get everything done. I don't want to not go forward. I want to move forward still, as, as fast as we can, as expeditiously as we can, but not recklessly so. It looks to me, from your description, it looks like the reason it's higher than what it is, is they've got a lot of work to do, and if they're going to do it, then they're going to get paid for it. And that's, that's all part of being in business. But I'm a little disappointed, and I realize it's only been a week since the bids were open. I thought from the description in our packet that there would be some actual, some recommendations that we would get, that we could help guide staff with. But at this point in time, I don't have any recommendations, other than let's find out what's going on and move forward.
We will do so.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Gary.
Okay, folks, we're coming, we're reading down here, and I've got a question to pose to council, because we will have an executive session at the end of this. Would you guys want to go on and do reports prior to that? As a poll, Dan, I'll let you-
I just got a couple of short ones, so-
All right.
Everybody's got quick ones, and-
Okay, let's start with you, Dan.
Public Works Finance, Walter chairs that committee, but he's gone, so I guess Art and I could tell you that we pretty much covered everything in the agenda today. The big thing was the sanitation roll cart report, I think that was the, the one we really were, were glad to hear. As far as my committee is the only one that I had to meet. In the meantime, was the tree commission met on the 1st of April, and there was a lot of information about how busy the mayor's going to be on Arbor Day, so I'm looking forward to seeing how that goes. And yes, we did have our goal-setting session, which, there was a pretty good article in the paper about that. We're continuing on with, you know, I guess Walter threw me under the bus, if you, if you want to say so, but, but, you know, we're not really creating a lot of new goals, we're trying to get those old ones finished and, and start checking some boxes off of, of the, the things that we ask staff to, to help us achieve in the city. So, looking forward to seeing how the, the entryway beautification and the expansion of Main Street stuff goes, and as well as hopefully some restrooms downtown at some point, so some options come in that direction.
Very good. Tom, administrative-
Yeah, the administrative committee, we took care of those items on council. I attended the Poverty of the Palouse presentation that was here on March 26th. There was a report on the Siringa Trailer Court. On the next day, on the 27th of March, I attended the Clearwater RC&amp;D meeting as the council liaison. Just regular business of the, of the RC&amp;D, mostly working on issues of economic development and agricultural issues. And on April 4th, attended the Idaho Water Adjudication Workshop with both Art Becky and Rod Hall.
And Les McDonald.
Right, and Les McDonald, sorry. I was thinking of the carpool.
Very good.
Thank you.
John?
I've got three short ones here. The Human Rights Commission met on March 18th, and they had a, a report about coming face to face with hate and a search for a world beyond hate. It went well, about 50 people attended. They're going to set up two more meetings at the high school and the U of I, and hopefully they will be as well-attended as the first one. And the community walk is set up and ready to go on Saturday, April 26th. There was some discussion about getting fresh water to Siringa, and other than that, I can probably cut that off and go to the planning and zoning, which met on March 26th. And other than the normal order of business, they reviewed of the proposed feudal home mortuary code amendment. That will go to a public meeting, I believe, on the next, not two weeks from now, two weeks from tomorrow. There was an introduction of the university zoning district review and consideration, and a review of the potential tandem parking draft amendment. Those are still going to come back in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The next one was the Urban Renewal Agency. We had a meeting, and probably the most informative thing was a guest presentation, applying value of the Moscow farmer's market. Very well done. A lot of information was given there. And then there was the Moskin, Moscow Urban Renewal Agency Draft Annual Report, given by Jeff Jones, also very informative, and little legacy crossing update. In fact, Jeff right now is at a work conference with Brownfield, and then when he gets back, he's going to go down to, I believe it's Sacramento or San Jose, I believe Sacramento, for a one-day look at a project that was completed using silos. And look at what was done, how much it cost, how long it took, so we have got a better answer as to what we could possibly do, or what the owners could possibly do with the silos we have. Other than that?
Wayne?
Well, the only one I'd really, I think I'll report on is Smart Transit. They had their meeting with the district coordinating council down in Lewiston last week. This is where they go before them, and plead their case for the 5311 federal funding for the 2015 fiscal year, when they put their budget together. And Gary went down, I went down, our executive director, Jenny Ford, naturally went down. And we thought we were going to have a little bit of time to kind of plead our case a little bit, and Gary and I both had things, white paper to present to them, and, and we were said, told, nope, you got three minutes. And so we presented as best we could, but we were treated very well this year. We received, we did not receive as much funding as we had requested, but nobody does, but we did receive 91% of our requested amount, which is good. That puts us about a $60,000 shortfall in 5311 funds, or federal funding that we're looking for, that we'll have to try to make up for 2015. But all in all, we felt that the district coordinating council very much understood how Moscow operates. Moscow is different than, than coast, it's different than Appaloosa Express, which is an Espris tribes transit system, which are both much more rural. Ours is actually kind of an urban process, but it, it went well. And so, we'll move forward, Smart will move forward into 2015. I think still naturally looking for good funding from the city of Moscow, the University of Idaho, and as well as some corporate funding, too. But things look, things look well, and we'll move forward.
Thank you, Wayne. Art?
I was at the URA with Johnny, covered that one very well. I would add to the Association of Idaho City's adjudication workshop that that had to do with water rights that are currently being determined for the Spokane-Rathram Aquifer Basin area, and we are stuck down here in the Palouse. We're the next to go, and it provided a really good foundation for us to prepare ourselves for that adjudication. And if we get our ducks in a row, it's all going to go very much easier for us when we actually get there. So it was very beneficial to understand some of the issues associated with that whole very large and complicated topic. Sustainable Environment Commission is one busy group. They've got a lot going on here, including Earth Day coming up here, the Earth Day Awards, the Sustainability Festival, and the, with the University of Idaho, the Race for Action, which is an amazing race sort of format, where teams go through town, participate in some activities dealing with sustainability, before moving on to the next one. And I believe our Mayor Lambert, along with Dr. Staben, the medical Dr. Staben, not the PhD one, will be one team on that. Tom Lamar and I are sponsoring another team, and I think that'll be a really excellent little adventure for everyone. Let's see, they're also putting on a film, trash, dealing with the trash and the disposal thereof at the Kinworthy, I think it's the 6th of May, but keep your eyes open for that. That'll be a really good item, too. They are working right along through a whole lot of things on that commission. They're quite busy.
Okay, thank you, Art.
There must have been a number of different commissions and board meetings on March 26th, and I had an airport board meeting that day as well, so there was a bunch of things going on, a pretty active day. And of course, Airport Board, quite a bit of that was with the runway realignment that we've all been seeing here of late, that's really come to fruition. And along with that Airport Board meeting, on April 2nd, we had a quarterly meeting with our regional folks from Whitman County, as well as the city of Pullman and Moscow and Leita County, and that was what the presentation for that quarterly breakfast was, was the realignment for the airport, that project moving forward. So, we're excited to see where that's going to take us, and there's more information, and there's a bunch of open houses coming, 1st to 23rd, and Pullman, 1st to 24th here in Moscow. So, the more to come on that, folks, and that- So more to come on that, folks, and that is all that I have to report. Gary, do you have anything you want to report before I?
Just that we have some, on the 18th, we have a reception for President Staben and Dr. Staben down at the Pritchard Gallery. That will take place, I believe, at 5 o'clock on the 18th. City cleanup, where we try to clean up downtown in preparation of the first farmers' market and graduation will occur on May 2nd, which is a Friday. So we'll have to patch that more, that's before Public Service Recognition Week. So a lot of stuff going on over the next couple of weeks. We'll keep the public and the council informed of what's happening.
The details on that May 2nd thing, that's a trash pickup downtown?
We, we'll put something out on it. We invite service groups, we have the chamber partners with us on it, council members, mayors come down and help clean up. City employees are encouraged to take a couple of hours and go out and clean up as well. Score overs, a public meeting.
Should be a fun day, should be a fun event. And you know, take pride in our town and clean it up before graduation comes, because there are going to be a lot of folks showing up.
Mayor Lambert's guaranteed it's going to be a sunny Friday, so it should be fun.
Well, we hope so, folks, we hope so. Well, we got 50/50 chance, that's why I say. Thank you, Gary.
Bill, did anybody drive this in, or has anybody mentioned tomorrow night our city U of I leadership get together? Is that tomorrow night?
Yes, that's a social gathering.
At 5:30, at the president's house?
Yep.
Oh, I wanted to mention a fundraiser that's coming up. Leita Trail Foundation is having a trail mixer on Saturday night, May 3rd. Lots of fun activities, auction items and so forth, to raise money to help fund the trail on the east side of town.
Okay, with that, folks, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
And not come back up.
And we will not return to the regular session once we're done with that. Okay, John, move to motion. Tom, second. We'll start with Art.
Aye.
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 Okay, this meeting is adjourned, folks. Thank you, have a nice evening.